Good evening. We are calling the Town Council Committee of the Whole on November 10, 2025 to order at 6:30 PM. Roll call, we have all present except for Council Boarder Line is not here yet. And Council Rusk, which is noted in our packet, but I believe she has resigned and taken a different position. All right, calendar and communications. Council Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Nothing to share other than, well, I'll hold reserve on that remark. I get something to share, but we'll hold reserve on it.
All right, thank you. Council Pacino.
I have nothing to pass, thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, Councilor Parker and I attended on Monday the pop-up food bank at Thrive 55. With the current situation with SNAP and food issues that are going on, we expected a lot of people and it, we did, we had 122 individuals that came, which is an increase from 77 the previous quarter. These pop-up food banks will be shifting from quarterly to every other month, starting in January. So it was well-attended and good event for everybody who needed some food. Then we, yesterday, we did the United States Submariners Veterans, Veterans Day Celebration, and this one was extra-special because we also had the Australian, the Royal Australian Navy was also in attendance. They are at the sub-base for training. And both countries, United States and Australia, and actually all the Commonwealth countries observe what used to be, I can't think what the original name was, but we call it Veterans Day.
Remembrance Day.
Remembrance Day, and they call it Remembrance Day Observance, so, or Remembrance Day. So we had both nations celebrating, they did poetries, they did wreaths, they remembered. They also have two boats, we have 65 boats and sailors, that had sailors on them that had either something with the boat or sailors who died in the service, they had two boats. So it was quite a moving event. Every time I've gone to it, it's been very moving, but I think it was extra-special having, as they said, our allies in presence, and about half the room was Australian sailors and the other half was US sailors. So that was a pretty cool event. Councilor Good was also there, Councilor Parker was there, I was there, and the new mayor of, now former Councilor, Councilor Rusk, now Mayor Rusk was in attendance, so.
Thank you. Council McBride.
Thank you. Various emails, phone calls, and texts from different residents on various matters, Pleasant Valley Purchase Agreement, Groton Heights Development, Noank Reconstruction Project, discussions with, I did have meetings with, or phone calls with every single counselor regarding the upcoming mayor position. It was great conversation with everybody. Some were interested in me becoming mayor, some were interested in Councilor Parker becoming mayor, but overall, great conversations and hopefully that will move forward. And the only other thing is the upcoming library meeting will not be held tomorrow, it will be held Monday, the 24th instead. And one other point, the Noank Main Street Reconstruction Project meeting is scheduled for next Thursday, the 20th, at 6:00 PM in Town Annex and Community Room 1. So that was all, thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify very quickly, they were candidates, right, not councilors? Is that correct? It's, they're councilors-elect, but not councilors, correct?
Councilor-elect.
Thank you. Councilor Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have nothing to add at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Council Parker.
I also wanted to say, thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations to the City of Groton on their swearing-in ceremony on Monday evening, myself, Councilor Pacino, you were there too, right, Councilor Good, am I missing anyone? I don't think so. Congratulations and congratulations to Deputy Mayor Sheffield. And Councilor Jones already said all the other events, but I did attend TVCCA. I don't remember if anybody put this out, the library meeting was October 27. Our next one, as Councilor McBride said, is going to be October 24 at 5:30 via Zoom.
Point of clarification, October 24?
I mean, November 24, thank you very much. TVCCA, that, I believe that is, oh, the next mobile food pantry will be on November 21st at St. John's Christians Church from 12:30 to 1:30. And I also know that the holiday baskets will be given at that time at, the human services from 9 to 4, is that correct?
I believe so.
9 to 4 on that day. I know last month we had 383 families, so it's been a, and we're anticipating more. So if you guys can, if anyone can donate or help donate, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Boarder Line.
Thank you. I just want to wish, you know, all of our active, retired, and currently-serving vets, and I hope everyone had a nice Veterans Day. And obviously, for me, as everyone knows, both of my boys are active-duty Navy, and I'm just very proud. And, you know, I do a lot with the Family Readiness Group for the USS Virginia as a family member, and so I'm just, you know, very excited to be a part of that environment. I did work on Veterans Day, and unfortunately, I was not able to attend any of the services and events that happened on the actual Veterans Day, but definitely would have loved to have attended if I, my time had permitted. Congratulations to the city mayor on the new position, and to the deputy mayor. Let's see, what else do I have? I had many communications with folks regarding Noank, regarding Pleasant Valley, regarding, you know, food insecurity issues within our town. And actually, we're getting people on the phone with the number that the town manager had given me before, directly to the manager there at the Human Service Department, too. They were able to help right away and get someone in on the same day, actually. They asked them if they, you know, could wait until the Monday, and they said no, and they did get them in on the same day, so that was good to hear. So thank you to the staff for that. And, you know, I also wanted to thank the Noank Fire Department, I saw the article in the day paper where they were doing forms of fundraising to help the firefighters from the submarine base who are working without pay. You know, they are one of our first lines of defense, they are support when there's been fires in the city, they do respond from the sub-base to support us throughout the town and the community. So I'm not 100% sure, I don't have the article open, I didn't have time to open it before I got here, so I apologize, but if you have questions, reach out to the Noank Fire Department, and they were trying to raise things to help out those families that have, you know, basically been working without pay. And so I really just commend them for the efforts that they're doing to support, and all the efforts people have been doing to support people in a time of need. Thank you.
Thank you. I also attended the swearing-in ceremony over at the City of Groton. Happy to have been there while the city councilors and Mayor Rusk were taking their oath. And I'd also want to say thank you to our Groton veterans, and also veterans across the country. Your service is appreciated, and thank you. Up next is approval of minutes. This is on page 2 of our packet. Council Parker, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I make a motion to approve the Town Council Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of October 28, 2025. I still move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Good. One is on our packet, page 8. It said, I don't know, it's probably like 2/3 down, and it says, options 1, 3, and 4 each received at least four votes. I believe that was actually five, because it was the, it was majority, which is consensus of the council. Then on page 9, there was a motion to adjourn, and it doesn't say by whom, and I believe that was Boarder Line, and seconded by Good. Anybody else have any updates to the minutes that they would like to put in? Council Mayor.
At this time, I would like to ask, I'd call it a point of clarification. I've spoken to several people, this is stepping outside this point of the agenda, but several people in Noank, and there seems to be a difference in their interpretation of a public hearing and a public meeting. And that one begat the other, I thought, but no, they want this and they want that.
All right, so it is in our minutes about a public hearing. Mr. Burt.
Yes, and as I said at that meeting, we have a public, we already were planning a third public vote meeting, and then we'll have the public hearing.
The town will.
Okay.
The town council will have a public hearing, yes.
Okay, so that's, that falls into...
That will definitely happen, yes.
That's the line of...
Both.
Right.
Public hearing and a, a public hearing and a community hearing, or a meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other changes, I'm going to take a vote on 2025-1021, October 28, 2025 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Right, that passes 8 to 0 to 0. Up next is new business, 2025-1005, Board of Ed, General Education, Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. This is in our packet on page 13. There is no motion at this time. I believe we have somebody here. Did you want to come up to the table, Mr. Enepas? Will there be something in writing on this? As a motion?
There's a motion on it.
Point of information?
Your question.
Is the chair or the superintendent coming as well?
I have not been notified that they would be in attendance.
I'm in.
Thank you. Do you, is there, Mr. Burt, is there a motion in writing for this after we get the presentation?
I haven't written one, it's just a motion to approve it, but, or if you don't think it's approved. Basically, if you don't reject it, then it's approved.
Okay, understood. Good evening, did you want to give us a synopsis and introduce yourself first?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. My name's Dean Ontepas, I am a member of the Groton Board of Education. And it sounds like you've all gotten a copy of the contract that the board and the Groton Education Association has agreed upon. And yes, the town manager is correct, the council does not have to take any action on this, and by law, within 30 days, it's deemed ratified by the council, you have also the same 30 days in which to reject it. Quick summary, this is a four-year contract, it's slated to run from September 1, 2026 to August 30th to 31st, 2030. There are wage provisions for each of the four years. I don't know whether you want me to go into the details of the steps, et cetera, but the basic, the basic terms of the wage increases are a four, the, the cost, there are changes whenever anybody moves through the years, they get an increase in pay, so there's that. But altogether, according to the contract, the first year will cost 4% over what their, the current aggregate salary figure is. Following that, each of the subsequent three years is 4 and 1/4. And so where that, where that takes us is in terms of dollar amounts, so you know, currently, and this changes, because the hundreds of teachers that we employ, the teachers that you have at the beginning of a contract, the teachers that you have at the end of the contract, are not the same groups of people. You may have retirements, and the hirings of younger teachers, and cheaper teachers. So it changes, so all these salary figures are close approximations. So, but just starting with our data, as of September 7, 2025, our payroll figure for the teachers is $34,575,634. So year one...
Point of information?
Yes.
Your question?
Do we have anything of that in writing anywhere, John, to follow along? Because I don't have that.
Whatever I received, I forwarded to the council.
Yeah, we don't have what you're reading.
Okay. Well, this is just a, this is just a summary that's been typed up.
Yeah, I guess, I guess...
It was sent in an email.
I know, but I don't have it in the packet form. I can pull it up on my email if you... I'll pull it up on my email. It just would be helpful to have that stuff as part of the packet.
That's not part of a point of information, thank you.
Right. We just, we don't, we weren't given it, so.
You can continue, I apologize.
I'm sorry. So, so again, the, the current figure as of, when I say the current figure, it could be a little different too, for now, but as of September 7, 2025, our payroll was $34,575,634. So, working strictly based off of that, year one of the contract, starting next year, September 1 of next year, 4% increase, that works out to a $1,383,025 increase, I'm going to leave off the cents. Following year, again, now we're going to the 4 and 1/4 increases. The second year would add an additional 1 million, 528,243 dollars. Third year would add an additional 1 million, 593,193 dollars. And the final year of the contract would add an additional 1 million, 660,904 dollars. Again, this is presuming that it's all working off of our payroll as of September of this year, and that will change as teachers retire and come in, and the pay rates and their pay changes. So that is actually less than, I was wondering, how many of you are familiar with how the teachers' contracts are negotiated? Because I, and I think for the benefit of the public, you should know, we don't start with a blank slate, and I know you don't do that with other bargaining units either. There's an existing contract, management, that's the board, comes in with a set of proposals, union has a set of proposals, we respond to each other's proposals, we whittle them down one by one, and the, the wages are usually the good stuffs left for the last. But there is an interplay among all of the different proposals, and so that's what we've come up with, is the, the 4, and then the 3, 4, and 1/4. That is, the, the state average is somewhat higher than that. We all have information, we and the bargaining unit have information about the settlements and the awards around the state, and any given year, roughly a third of the contracts are up for the teachers. So there's a lot of information out there. The teacher's contract, like certain other contracts, if we were to go to arbitration, it's the last best, it's on a basis of last best offer. So whatever our position is, whatever the teacher's position is, if an arbitrator finds that one of those positions is closer to reasonable, meaning what's going on in the rest of the state, that's what they give, not what the state number is, but who's closer to reasonable. So for example, let's say that the average, state average is a 4% increase, it's higher than that. Say it was a 4% increase, and the teachers came in and they said, "We want 5," and we said, "Nope, 0, we're digging at our heels and 0." And the two sides never come together, we go to arbitration, the teachers don't get 4, they get 5. So it pays for both parties to come as close as possible to, to what's going on in the rest of the state. It's also not a bad idea to keep pay up with, with other districts, because we all are competing with other teachers, with other districts for teachers. They are not, especially science and math teachers are not just falling like ripe fruit out of the trees. So it pays to keep up with the Joneses. So that's, that's as far as wages go. We have certain plan changes in the insurance, we're adding a hybrid plan, we believe it's more cost, it's a cost-effective alternative, we're adding specialty drug pharmacy for high-cost drugs. Our cost shares for all four years, well, we're keeping, right now, the cost share for insurance is 22 and 1/2%. We're keeping it that way for the first two years, we're knocking it up a quarter of a point for the third year, and another quarter of a point for the fourth year. We're keeping it the same, traditionally, we've, we've bumped everything up a, a point every year, every time the contracts have come up. But we have found that, we are currently in a position where we, we're already on the high side, along the high side for the 22 and 1/2, and so it really wasn't called for to hike it yet again, and to stay not only ahead of everybody else, but even further ahead of everybody else on that one. So we've agreed to keep it where it was. There are certain other changes that we've made in the contract regarding personal leave. Personal leave can be taken in hourly increments, it's currently measured in quarter-days. We've negotiated provision where the maternity or adoption leave has to be taken within the eight-week period following birth or adoption. It was possible to say, to take your leave months later, and still said that it was maternity or adoption leave. Small changes, changing the name from, from Study Hall to CLT or Advisory, and reduces the size of that class from 40 to 25. More important provisions, prep periods, teachers are released, there are certain teachers who are responsible for Medicaid billing, and this takes time out of their day. And we have released teachers from certain other duties, lodge duty, for example, or bus duty, or whatever, if they have 10 or more students, and they have to do the Medicaid billing for them. So the ones who are doing, the small handful who are doing a lot of Medicaid billing, because that is what their caseload is, are excused from being called to duty for as many times as for, as much as the other teachers are. We're guaranteeing elementary classroom and special education teachers 2, 40-minute teacher-directed prep periods per week. And there was also a great deal of back and forth regarding teacher attire, and we settled on acquiring teachers to come to work in professional attire, and what's professional or not professional will be up to the building principle. And so that's, that's roughly, that's roughly it. So my understanding is that the bargaining unit has already voted, and by a large margin approved the contract. We, of course, have voted to approve the contract as well, so it's up to the, up to the council now to give it a thumbs-down if it wants to, or give it a thumbs-up if it wants to endorse it, or just sit quiet. Any questions?
Mr. Burt?
I did prepare a motion, and it's better to approve it if possible, just I don't have to wait out for 30 days, so.
Would you like me to...
Would you like to put the motion on the floor?
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the agreement between the Board of Education and the General Education Association, GEA, for the period of September 1, 2026, through August 31, 2030. I still move.
Second?
Moved by Parker, seconded by Boarder Line.
Council McBride.
Thank you, just a couple of quick questions. Tuition reimbursement costs are escalating in all of these labor contracts, do you have an estimate? What's the, it's not mentioned here, do you have, just from my knowledge, how that works in the Board of Ed in terms of tuition reimbursement?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, you're right, there is labor, there is tuition reimbursement, that was not an item that was negotiated this time around, there was no proposal from us or from the bargaining unit. So whatever is already provided for in the contract is, is what we have, but what that is, I'd have to look it up and...
So it's the same, that's fine.
It's what it was before.
Yeah, thank you. Second question, last question. Have you ever looked into health insurance opt-outs in a contract?
I believe we have. I believe we have, but as I sit here, I'm not sure. That's, that is one area that is so complex, and you've probably experienced it yourself with the contracts, it's so complex that we have a, a professional consultant that comes in and makes the presentation, tries to explain it all, and the bargaining unit has their own person that, that deals with it as well. And a lot of it frankly is, I'm going to say it's Greek to me, but I understand Greek, so, but it does tend to be, it does tend to be above a lot of our pay grades. There was, I mean, as you mentioned it, it sounds familiar. I'm pretty sure it was considered, but again, other than what I, what I talked about making, adopting a hybrid plan, everything else remains the same. Well, that and the specialty drug pharmacy, there's a, a question there. And you know, a lot of these policies, actually, all these policies, they don't fit everybody equally. You know, they're, they're great for as many people as possible that like it, there are always some people that say, "I'd like something better," but if you would attend to their needs now, it's not great for the other group. There's always somebody who is unhappy with, with these plans, which can be, to a large extent, kind of a one-size-fits-all, but, but anyway. Okay, thank you, I'm going far field.
Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Ontepas. Can you just, just because I don't quite understand, on the wages section on the sheet that we have, it has top step increase 2.5, all other steps 2.15, but the total amount is 4%. I don't understand what, how you get, what, why? What does that mean?
Yeah, so what, what typically happens is the, the union, per, if you will, orders from the, from the mothership, when they're looking at the number, what they're happy with, what they're not happy with, either our proposal or what they're proposing, what they tend to do is they'll say, okay, if it's a three-year contract or a four-year contract, we'll add up all the percentages, so let's just say that they would like to see four years of a 5%. So they're walking and saying, "We want 20." Now, that doesn't really work that way, because it's compounding in reality, but they think in terms of the 20, or the 18, or the 17. So that's their, that's the beginning step, then you go one step below that, and you say, okay, what's everybody going to get per year? So we're either happy, unhappy, we negotiate, we go back and forth. The actual effect of a quote 4% aggregate change in the salary figure, how it works out into the steps, it's a whole other animal, so you can't, you can never take the, the total cost and work it backwards into the steps like that. What we do know is, and I ask for this all the time, okay, fine about the percentages, but how many more dollars is it going to be? And we're talking, are we arguing $100,000, a million dollars, or what? That's what I'd like to know, that's more useful information for me. It happens that as the steps, if you look at the whole, I believe, I can't remember how many steps, we have, 14 steps. If you look at all the steps, they're not all even, you don't, you don't have the same jumps. We actually have a bit of a sag, as compared with competitors, with competing districts, if you will. So, and that's just a factor of, that, that's because we're trying to increase, increase starting pay.
So if I can...
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
So does a teacher get 4% increase, or 2.5?
Teachers don't, the teachers don't see that, don't see the 4%. When we say 4%, what we're saying is that it's going to cost us 4% more in the aggregate than last year. The teachers are going to see whatever percent they're going to, they're going to see as they move up. Either, it's a, it's a combination of the steps themselves are more valuable, and also the fact that they've moved through, so...
So if I look through these, these wages of these four years, so the averages, they're 2 and 1/2, or the 2.1, or the 2.7, but that's what their real increase is in their salary, is in that range.
Right.
Not the 4.
Yeah, so an individual teacher doesn't say, "Hey, I'm getting 4, I'm getting 4% more next year." That's not how that works.
But the effect of all of this ends up being 4.
They're, they're getting more because they've moved up in the, they've moved up in the, in the table.
Yeah, no, that makes sense to me, it's just, I don't, and...
And others may be, maybe, maybe not just moving up, getting an increase because they're moving up, but because the step, the step itself has become more valuable. So for example, we've, those, those teachers at the top steps, they've, they've maxed out. So typically, what you'll see in a contract is, well, there'll be an increase, we won't add steps, but there'll be an increase in those step, in the, in the value of those steps. Once you reach age, whether you're there 14 years, or 20 years, or 25 years, you're making the same. So those teachers expect and typically get a, a raise, even though there are no more steps. So that's, that's where a lot of the money goes.
Okay. All right. We'll put that aside for a moment. If I understand the year 1, 2, 3, and 4, and what you're talking about is, to you is, what is the dollars? So if I just look at this quickly, if I just look at the first year, right now, it's 34, 575, if I add that together, it's 35, it's 36, roughly 36 and change, million, and that's 0.44. Then when I move to the next year, I'm taking 40, 0.44% on that $36 million number, right? Does these compound?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so they just keep, so as we, we go up, this all goes into the, the MBR number, is that correct?
Yeah.
So it's sort of the base underneath your, your total salary?
That's right, yeah, my understanding is, I don't... That's right. Yeah, my understanding is unless you can find a different, more economically efficient way to skim the cat, then yes, that's, frankly, in basic terms, yeah, you've got to spend at least what you spent last year.
Just a point of clarification. The MBR only goes up if the council approves it. This isn't an MBR rule.
At the moment.
Well, yeah.
No, I'm just, I mean, eventually, something will happen. So what I'm just sort of saying is, out of the 60 million that the town contributes, 36 million of it is for salaries, and the balance of it is other things, operating.
Yeah, this is just, yeah, this is just the teacher's salary.
Just the teacher's.
But the teachers, of course, represent the single largest category and single largest bargaining group in the town, necessarily, because we have thousands of kids to teach.
Okay, I guess that's...
Yes, I think my question has already been answered, but in comparison to the other unions in the town, are we compatible with the increase per year? Or are you talking 4% per year for the teachers?
Yeah, so going into any, and you folks know this as well, going into any negotiation with any of the bargaining units, there is a thought, not just the management, but also among the unions as well, what did everybody else get? That's a consideration, but it's not a driver. So we've never had, for example, the teachers say, well, the police got. Typically, what happens is, and also, we can't even really go back to, what did they get last time? We talk about it. Hey, what did we give them in the last contract? Everything is kind of a standalone. And so what they're doing by asking this, and what other, the other unions as well, around the state of the union as well, is said, look, we're, I believe what they're doing is they're trying to keep up with the rise in prices over the years. Everything is just like 20% more than it was, you know, five years ago. So this is driven by that. So there were people who say, well, you know, you gave them zeros years ago. Yeah, 2009, we negotiated a contract that was zero, zero, one and three quarters. That was 2009. We can't repeat that unless we have another, you know, 2008 meltdown. So everything is kind of a standalone. The last time, I think the numbers were like in the threes. So now, these are the fours. I think this is probably the largest percentage that I've seen, but frankly, I'm not shocked, you know, given the rise in everything else.
Well, I'm just comparing with the other unions in the town, and I'm looking at 2, 2.5%, I believe, per year, and I've never heard of 3% per year.
Right. If you look at it that way, then four looks excessive.
Correct.
But if you look at it from the point of view of, what do you pay your teachers in order to retain them or to attract new ones? What's everybody else paying? You know, why come to teach for Groton when I'm going to get $10,000 less? I'm making numbers up. Why teach in Groton for $10,000 less when I can make better money in Waterford, or Madison, or wherever? So it's like the situation, frankly, when I was on the council years ago, we had the cops come in. The police unions, you know, we were looking at the pay rate. It looked like we were basically very under a lot of other towns. We were very far under the average. Over the years of keeping things in check, we had fallen below the average, which meant that if we're looking for new police officers, frankly, who do you get? Who's going to settle for less pay? Are they going to love the area, regardless of the pay? Are they going to, we're going to get, all the good ones, in other words, have been swiped by other towns. So there is an element, like it or not, of trying to keep up with the Joneses. We want our salaries to be competitive. So, and if it works out to 4%, that's what it works out to. If it works out to 1%, to keep them competitive, that's what it works out to. So shorthand, a short way of putting it, again, comparing with the other unions, that's one thing to look at, but it's really more about the competitiveness, keeping the salaries competitive. It's also, again, driven by what's the state average. We came in below the state average. If we had said, no, we're going to give you 2.5%, and believe me, the sides come in with their favorite numbers. If we dug in our heels, we'd wind up going to arbitration. And the arbitrators will look at the last best offers from each side, and they'll pick the one that's closest to what's reasonable. And what's reasonable is they'll look around the state, and they'll see that everybody else is getting, and they'll award, they'll award the figure that's closest to reasonable. Not the reasonable figure, but what's closest to reasonable.
Well, I hope that they would consider what Groton can afford also.
They do consider that. We've brought that up many times, that Groton is not Greenwich. And whether we feel this way or not, as far as your typical arbitrator is concerned, Groton doesn't have to be Greenwich. It just doesn't have to be, it just can't be Bridgeport. I'm going to use Bridgeport as the whipping post here. But yeah, we've made the claim, and we've been told flat out, you will not be considered unable to pay, unwilling to pay, but not unable to pay. You've got to be in pretty, going to be in pretty dire straits to be able to make the claim that we can't afford, you know, the increase against. It's not what we like. It's what we're going to get in the real world.
No, I would suggest to them that in 2030, they might not consider such a large increase per year.
Yeah, well, we'll see what 2030 looks like. Yeah, that's about all I can say.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Good?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through the mayor. Thank you, Dean, for this presentation. I've just got three quick questions, and I'll ask them all at once, and you can just go.
Sure.
Maybe not the most important part of this contract, but number one, what does CLT mean? Number two, what is the reason to reduce that class from 40 to 25? And number three, logistically, how is that going to impact the schools just from space? Thank you.
Well, yeah, that's the, that is, I'm trying to remember what CLT stands for. It'll come to me, but probably as soon as I walk out of here. But it doesn't really change. It's a study hall, essentially. And it's, 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 right now, you've got one person minding 40 kids, and even though it's not a formal classroom, it's 40 kids, 40 of today's kids. And so we deemed it not a great impact, if it does an impact at all on the management of the, on the management. When we're told by personnel, who is really quite strict about this stuff, and doesn't take anything, basically, it always looks sideways. Whatever the teachers want, eh, I don't know, I don't know. She's doing her job. If she tells us there's no problem with, you know, in managing things by reducing from 40 to 25, it was a non-issue. They proposed it, and we're like, not a problem, it's not a disturbance. It's not, it's not like we're reducing class sizes, for example. Next class sizes all across the board. This just happens to be, I'll call it a study hall. This thing from study hall to CLT or advisory was just, you know, something more or less poetic than the earlier one. I prefer study hall, but that's what's me. Probably because most kids don't study when they're in study hall. They're probably doing this, which, by the way, they shouldn't be on. Anyhow, any other questions?
Well, just logistically, you know, it's going to almost double the amount of study halls needed for the same amount of students. I'm just wondering, there's room in the schools to have two study halls as opposed to one, or is it just changing the hours of study hall?
It may change the hours. It may require another room. I don't believe that we, I can tell you that in the middle school, we don't have any room. But apparently, there's, it's, like I said, it was one of those things that wasn't, it was not an issue. It was proposed, and it was an automatic, yep, no problem, unlike a lot of other things, frankly, in the contract. We went, just so you know, we got to the point of, we were done with our scheduled meetings, and we bounced right into a mediation session, because we still had differences between us. So this is not a, we managed to work it out. It's funny, because the mediator didn't show up at the end of the day, and we wound up sort of mediating it ourselves and hammering it out. Because failing mediation, we wind up in arbitration, and that's usually not very good. It's expensive, and if you look at who wins and who loses in these things, you can guess. So, thank you.
Council Borland?
Thank you. My understanding, there might be an error, actually, in this. It's not CLT, it was C T L, it's supposed to be.
Maybe that's...
That's what that revision's supposed to be. But also, my concerns, again, we're late at 11:00 on this, so, you know, as the manager said, you know, vote this in. But the thing is, for me, is, I am concerned, and I just want to speak on the record about it. Many folks have reached out to me and have over the years, the concerns for the cost of the medical insurance, especially for the paras, of people who are making, in my opinion, working extremely hard, making the least amount of pay, they're paying as much as everyone else who's making much more money. And so I'm not happy to see that there's not much change to, some type of relief to those folks, that when you talk about the competitive salaries, one of the other drivers is your health and making sure you have affordable health care. So can you speak to that at all, is, you know, the inequalities there, that, you know, unfortunately, our paras, because I'm sure they wouldn't agree with this. I mean, this is a negotiation that's moving forward, because probably nothing else could happen, but I can't imagine, and I've heard from many, that, you know, really were concerned about the cost of medical. That's my question.
The, yeah, it's a valid issue. The paras, as you know, have their own bargaining unit. They don't fall within this. As I sit here, I don't have the information on the para contract that was negotiated. That was pretty hard fought as well. And yeah, they are the least paid of our personnel. And we were limited, well, we were limited. There's only so much money to go around, and we'd like those to be a little more competitive as well. But that'll be addressed the next time around.
And what about the teachers' medical?
Well, again, we had made a proposal. It's, it seems to be the case, and I've seen this over the years, it seems to be the case that once something, once a scheme is adopted, whether it's a whole new scheme, or just tweaks to a scheme, that's what they get used to. And when we introduce a change, there's a natural hesitance on their part to just go along with it. It's figuratively, it's kind of a folding their arms, and then they'll wait to hear from our specialist in insurance, they'll wait to hear from their specialist in insurance. They'll talk amongst themselves about, you know, is this change going to be good for most of us, or not good for most of us? And then they come back to us, and they let us know, we'd like the change, we don't actually like the change, we'll agree, we won't agree. So, and that's how it's done. So we proposed, they proposed. If somebody has a third idea, it's really outside the negotiation. So for example, I've heard people talk about, and the paras have brought up, you know, adopting the state plan. That's a whole other thing, because the town, we're all self-insured with the town. But the paras have brought up the issue of getting on the state plan. That would require recharging a whole lot of things. The teachers have never asked for that. So if they're not asking for it, and we're not proposing it, it's not discussed. So they, like I said, the one concession here is that we were already at 22 and a half, and 22 and a half was at water level or above, and so we figured we'll keep at the 22 and a half for the first two years of the contract, and let life catch up. But as for the paras, again, separate contract.
So also, looking at this eight-week period, my understanding, I mean, well, now, some people get 12 weeks, actually, but when I was having children, it was only eight weeks. But yes, obviously, once a woman gives birth, you know, she has that child. But my understanding, many employers were trying to be fair and equitable to the spouse, or also what's considered more traditional families now, where you might have same-sex marriage, or you might even have a husband who, you know, also gets this leave time. And so the wife may take the first eight weeks, but then the husband may take the eight weeks preceding that, because then the child now has 16 weeks of a familiar face and family member home, and they're not paying for childcare. So I am concerned with this. Obviously, I'm probably not going to make any change tonight, but the reason things are like that is because you can now draw out the amount of time that families are split. When I was having kids, husbands didn't get maternity leave. Now, you can take maternity leave for your child, and that is one of the reasons. Also with adoptions, from friends I know that have adopted in the states and out of the states, sometimes the date, you might go in today to adopt a child, but you might not actually physically have that child for weeks or months after. So you might go and do a court proceeding to physically legalize it, but it might not be until, you know, so, and also, some people have to travel to other countries when they adopt. And so sometimes, again, they go over for the adoption, but then they go back to bring the child. And so I just think this is really not helping traditional or non-traditional families that are trying to have a family. I think we should be looking at more broader ways to support the family. So I just don't really support that. I think, you know, one of the new things I love is when I hear people say, I took 12 weeks of leave, and then my husband took 12 weeks after that. And it's like, wow, you got 24 weeks home. I'll take my second term after. Actually, can I just continue my turn? Do you mind? And then I'd be done.
Actually, I have a first-time speaker.
Sure, go ahead.
Council Pacina?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm Walden Willi.
No, you're next.
Okay, not a problem. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to bounce off of what Council Good was mentioning about the class size going down from 45 in the study halls to about 25, you said it was? Does that mean we now have to have two teachers?
No, it doesn't increase the number of teachers. To be honest, I'm not sure how that works out. It's either, I think it just has to do with scheduling. I think they work it out with scheduling.
So possibly, one teacher does two study halls of 25 apiece?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I can see that. All right.
Yeah. Like I said, it was not controversial in the least. It wasn't an accommodation of any sort. It didn't strike me as like an accommodation at the time. It seemed like it was perfectly doable. That was one, that's definitely one in here in the list, that's, that was a no-brainer. They wanted it, they got it, because we didn't think it was a big problem.
I'm not having any issue with it.
Yeah.
I would just try to figure out the math.
Regarding the maternity and adoption leave, that was, that was an issue where we started with one position, and the union started with another position, and we came in the middle somewhere. That's where that comes from. So...
I'm done, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you just talk to me about, in other changes, D, Article 10 prep periods, what does Medicaid billing of 10 or more students, what is going on there?
So certain services that we provide are paid for, reimbursed by Medicaid. That requires the service provider to actually do the Medicaid billing. They have to get online and do the Medicaid billing for the student. They, the original position was that we, whether you were doing Medicaid, and this is a minority of the teachers, but these teachers, the ones who do do it, have to do Medicaid billing, like I said, and nobody else does. And yet, they are on call for all the other duties that teachers are on call for, whether it's lunch duty, or hall duty, or whatever. So there was a proposal by the union to exempt teachers who do, or at least exempt, to some degree, teachers who perform Medicaid billing, which no other teachers do, from these other calls, this other duty. And so we struck a compromise, that if you have a teacher who's doing not just one, but say, 10 or more, has 10 or more students that they're, for whom they're doing Medicaid billing, that they would be exempt a certain amount of time per week. So that's all that that was. So to sort of be more equitable in who's doing what.
Is this going to result in you needing to add staff to do the actual billing?
No. It just means that that teacher would not be, so if a teacher's got 10 or more students that they have to do Medicaid billing for, they're not responsible for, if they were ordinarily be on call for, say, lunch duty five times a week, they wouldn't be responsible for more than two times a week.
So just reshuffling of their duties?
That's all that that is.
Do you have a sense of how many students we have that are on Medicaid?
That I don't know. And it's not that the students themselves are on Medicaid, but that the services are provided, are funded by Medicaid. I can't say what those services are, except that you're talking about the special needs students. I don't know how many that would be.
With the changes that are going to be happening with the big, beautiful bill in 2026, where Medicaid services are going to be cut, do you anticipate that we're going to lose some of the Medicaid funding that we have currently?
That I couldn't address. I have no idea.
Might want to find out.
No.
Because it's probably going to be significant. And I don't know whether you have that planned in your budget or not.
The next board will be diving into the budget, I'm sure, starting in January.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Council Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was in attendance on these, watching both sides come to an agreement. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was in attendance on the, watching both sides come to an agreement. A lot of things worked out very well between all of us. And as Mr. Antipas said, we did have to have that, our own mediation. And this was worked out well. They came up with a plan. They took turns, and I witnessed the whole thing. And this process was the best at the time. It's the best one there, because the state average is more. So, we went compromised on the proposed settlement, which is the bottom square or rectangle. The health insurance, they did have the hybrid plan for everyone that could use the hybrid plan. For those who couldn't do the high deductible, they did have a specialty drug added for the high cost of drugs. And the adoption maternity leave, that was a well-thought-out plan between both parties, because they didn't want to leave a lot of the open positions and having to pay for somebody to come in and cover more than 12 weeks, I believe, as the case was stated before. So, it was very cordial, very, a good time for both parties to work together. And it was, I have to thank all of both parties for doing a wonderful job on this contract. So, they did the best they could at this time. Thank you.
The bargaining unit was very ably represented, as were we.
Counselor Burley?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to, you know, is eight weeks even, I thought it was 12 weeks maternity leave. Like, how does it go down?
It's not eight weeks of maternity leave. It's when you could use it. We had wanted the use of it immediately afterwards, and they wanted it some months later. We struck an average of that it must be taken within eight weeks, the eight-week period following the birth or adoption. So what we did, what we wanted to prevent was somebody saying, basically blowing through all the other time, and then saying, you know what, I think I'd like to use it in September, when it's months after everything else.
Yeah, I just meant.
So, we wanted it used immediately. They wanted to be able to use it later. So we struck a compromise of, whatever you're going to use, you got to use it within eight weeks following. We're not saying you got, oh, nevermind. And again, it bears repeating. They asked, they had a position, we had a position, and we compromised. So, if they, you know, the members of the board, the negotiating team, have private positions about what they would like to see, how they feel. But we also have to keep in mind that we are representing the public as, if you will, the management. In labor law, we're the management. And our job is to get as much of an advantage on our side as possible, whatever we think is prudent. And just as the union's job is to get as much as it thinks it can get on its position. We're not, and that's how that works. It's necessarily adversarial. Cordial, but it's adversarial. We agree, we don't agree. And eventually, we either see it all their way, or they see it all our way, or we come to the middle, or we don't come together at all, and somebody else has to figure it out for us, either mediator or arbitrator. And that is just the nature of things. Yes, privately, we may say, geez, it should be a bigger number, et cetera, but that's not our job as management.
Yeah. And you guys have an attorney look this over before it's finalized, I assume?
Oh, yeah.
So that eight weeks falls, you know, does follow the state guidelines?
Yeah. If you, yeah, we have Burcham Moses Devlin out of Milford. We've used them for years to negotiate these contracts. I have been, I mean, hats off to Floyd Dugas. He is a consummate professional. Never found him lacking for knowledge. He's got it all down. He's not the only one, of course, but there are many competent, but he's definitely got it all down. He's done a good job for us, I feel.
Thank you. Counselor Pacina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One more question that Counselor Jones reminded me of with his questions. The Medicaid, teachers doing the Medicaid and being allowed to not necessarily have to do the bus duty and the cafeteria duty. My, I understand teachers teach. They do bus duty, they do, they do everything with the children. Why is this Medicaid paperwork not a staff job? Why isn't somebody on the staff doing this?
Because we would add staff.
Oh, we don't have enough staff?
Well, we could add, we could add staff. Well, the other thing, too, is, I'm saying this because I'm not sure how it works. It may be that by law, I'm just guessing, it may be that by law, the person who provides the services must be the one who does the billing. I'm guessing there. But if not, if that's not a requirement, and Medicaid doesn't care who does the numbers, then yeah, we would add somebody in the office. But we typically don't have extra people. I know that tends to be the public perception, but we typically don't have extra people. As it is, we're shorthanded in the business office, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, how long was mediation altogether, like, including all the negotiations?
Well, the negotiations themselves, I lose track of how many there were. There were at least, there were at least half a dozen. So basically, we meet the first time to iron out how we're going to be, iron out the schedule and what we're, not what we're going to talk about, but just to iron out the schedule, when are we going to meet, where we're going to meet, et cetera. Mediation itself, there was a date scheduled. There's always a tentative date scheduled for that. So, you do that, you know this in the summer as you move through. You say, okay, in case you have to mediate, what's the date? So you don't wind up doing it at the 11th hour. So, we didn't have agreement after we blown through all the scheduled dates and meeting dates. So we followed the mediation date, and our mediator got hung up with something else. So he literally didn't show. So now, here we all are, negotiating team, our lawyer, bargaining unit, their lawyer, waiting for the mediator, doesn't come. So we figured, you know what, let's see if we can work it out ourselves. One last try to work it out ourselves. But we were at the point where we called in the mediator. He just didn't show up. If mediator had shown up, we probably would have wound up with the same deal. We were close enough, but we hadn't closed the gap. And we managed to close it, because for the same reason that I think we typically close these things. Who wants to really go to arbitration? It costs a lot of money. And what are your prospects? So, and everybody knows that. So.
The timeline? Like, was it six months, a year?
Oh, no, it wasn't a year. It started, when did it start, Counselor Burley?
Madam Mayor, may I respond to that? We started in September.
Oh, this year?
This year.
Yeah. And typically, we would meet, you know, once a week.
Once a week.
In the evening until it was done. I can't remember how many dates we set, but.
September to November? Septem-
It wasn't, it wasn't.
Or October?
October.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't know if you're allowed to tell me, but what was the contentious items that were the sticking points in that?
Well, I'd rather not. That's a touchy area, so I'd rather just be on the safe side. I'd rather not.
Okay, understood. Understood. I just wanted to get a feel if you were going to let me know. Let me just quickly ask, and not saying I'm going to, or I'm interested in this, but what if the town council did reject this? What would happen then?
We'd go to arbitration.
All right. So, if this is, took this time period, and both sides are agreeing to it, whether, not everybody got what they wanted, but they compromised, I'm going to be in favor of this, of course. But the one thing that I'm sort of lacking here is seeing, when you look at the proposed settlement, it doesn't show anything previous to show, like, we have the projected salary analysis. It doesn't show maybe what the last contract was, to show what the increase was there. So you could see, like, when you're dealing with a budget, you can sort of see how this is increasing and maybe what the changes are. And trust me, I completely understand the environment right now with hiring and keeping employees. And you want, like you had said, you want to keep up with the Joneses on this one. I completely agree. It would just sort of be nice to see that in comparison. I think over the next, I believe, four years, I think it's a big increase in salaries, going from 34.5 million up to, it's going to be 40.6 million. It is a big increase. But as you are showing here, it is sort of a state average, and we're a little bit below that. So, the question I also have is, like, the cost, when you're saying the 4.25% cost, does that include benefits as well?
No, that's salaries. Salaries.
Just straight-up salaries?
Straight-up salaries.
All right. It is very hard to wrap your head around when you're giving a 2.6% increase. So is, when you're talking about the steps that you had discussed earlier, so is that sort of like you're getting a merit increase as well, like a step increase as well as a percentage increase for your salary? Is it combined? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. So, without any changes, if we just had a level, just say you had all zeros, people would still get increases because they're moving through the table. If you've all seen the table, you've got qualifications along the, I'm going to say qualifications along the top, and then years along the side. Or the other way around. How many credits they have. Then you were from bachelor's to, you know, PhD, or they don't call it PhD, but they call it 60 extra, masters plus 60 or something like that. So you get credit for being more qualified, you get credit for spending more time. Let's say you have no further qualifications, you are where you are educationally, and just move through time, you get an increase. Just goes, just from moving from year to year. So you hit some of the top steps, and then you sort of, you even out, I believe, for the last couple of years, last three years. Your pay doesn't really change. So for the people who are maxed out, even if there was no other increase, for the people who are already maxed out, they hit the step 14, but they've been teaching for 25 years. They'd like to see an increase. Everybody else is getting an increase. Why shouldn't they get their 2.5% increase? So they get a bump. But like I said, the guts of it is how the steps are actually, and within the table are increased, the aggregate effect in year one is a 4%. However that's sliced and diced, that whole increase could just be given to the top people. The whole increase could be just given to the bottom people. We don't actually make that table. If you look at, and a lot of districts have this, there's a SAG. If you looked at every given year, every step, and you compare it with other districts all around the state, you see us, from your end, it would be this way, you know, for the entry level, where are we with respect to the median, and then every year, where are we with respect to the median, and you see a bit of a SAG in the middle. It's not just us. You see this in some corporations as well. This is trying to boost the entry level pay to attract people, and then people on the high end getting raises. And it's big dollars, because they're already making big dollars. And it's the middle that's kind of neglected. So our question for us has always been, what happens when you get to year five? And now, our, even though it's more money, it's below the average. So we're not as competitive as we used to be. Are we losing people? What we're being told is, yes, our higher pay, when you get to step five, which is still, which is now below the average, whereas the other ones were above the average, should translate into people saying, I'm looking for greener pastures. And apparently, they're not. At least, nothing that's causing us trouble in keeping people. So it's not like we're having people hit year five when our chart begins to dip. And they bolt. They don't. They stay, for whatever reason.
So let me just quickly ask. If you're going from, let's just say, step six to seven.
Yeah.
Is, like, it says here, 2.45 increase to all other steps. They're getting a 2.45. It's not like a step increase plus the 2.45. Is that correct?
Yeah. They're getting, so the steps, the steps are increasing in value, the steps themselves are increasing in value. But you also get a bump up when you move to another step. So, some people may actually be seeing a nice increase, because they're moving into, they're moving over a step, so they're getting that natural increase. And that that step itself may, in fact, also be more valuable as a step than it was before. So, yes, some people may see.
So you're saying some people might go from four, step four to step six. They might skip step five, and the increase is even greater then. Is that what you're saying? Because I'm trying to really square up.
Yeah.
How most people are getting a 2.45, and the top is getting a 2.6, but the cost is going up 4.25. I'm really trying to wrap my head around that one?
Yeah, no.
And I'm trying to really, like, because if everybody was getting at a minimum 2.45 or a top 2.6, your cost would not go up 4.25. That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah.
I'm not getting, I'm not understanding it, maybe, in the way you're explaining it.
Well, yeah, because the 2.6% increase in the top steps, in the top step, only applies to those people, however many that is. And the 2.45 applies to the other steps, however many that is. Working together, it operates as a four and a quarter increase to the aggregate. That's why you can't, you can't add those together, because they're weighted differently. It's different numbers of people for the 2.6 and 2.45. If we had, if we had 200 teachers, if we had 200 teachers, 200 of whom were eligible for the 2.6 increase, and the other 200, 100 are eligible for the 2.6, and the other 100 are eligible for the 2.45, then you could compare those two. You could say, well, you know, you put that together. But it doesn't work out that way. It works out that, on the whole, we wind up going four and a quarter, when you add it all together. But how that works out, I mean, the four and a quarter could all go to one, you know, all go to one side. But it doesn't.
To be honest with you, this still doesn't make sense to me, because I work with numbers all the time. And if your max increase is 2.6, and your lowest is 2.45, your average is somewhere in the middle, not way above it, and you don't add together. So, I'm not quite understanding. Counselor McBride?
Yeah. Thank you. If I could elaborate, I think I may understand, I think something we're missing. There's also a cost of living adjustment. So, I think the easiest way, and this isn't exact, but the way I would understand this is, all the employees are going to receive a cost of a living increase. So let's just say the cost of living increase is 1.65%. Then other individuals, some, not all, will receive step increases in addition to that. So some of those, some may receive 2.6 increase, others may receive 2.45. The sum total of the COLA, plus the step increase, is the 4.25. So it's really the cost of living index that they're all receiving increase on, that's driving that number to 4%. That's how I, that's how I understand it.
Yeah. It's a, if you, if you were to, if you were to look at each employee and look at their particular situation, are they getting more money because they moved a step? Are they getting more money because they moved a step, and that step is not more valuable? How much more valuable is it? And you did all the math for all the employees, and you added it all up. That's where you would get the 4%. It comes out to 4%. From the management side, from the district side, it's another 1.38 million dollars. That's what it comes to.
But not every employee receives step increases every year. But every employee does receive COLA increases.
Well, you get, yeah, right. You don't, you might not receive a step increase, but you will actually move through the steps. You're there for five years. Now, in year six, you'll get more money, because now you're there for six years. Then you're there for seven years, and you keep moving through, till you hit, you know. So you have 30-year employees. There is no theory of step anywhere. So they max out.
But every, every year, every employee does increase a step. It may happen every couple of years, they increase a step.
No, they move, they move through as a function of time. Every year, they move up a step.
And then they're also getting the COLA increase, correct?
Yeah. So they get an increase because they moved up a step. Typically, every step is a little more valuable than the prior step. Sometimes a lot more valuable. We actually broke up one of the steps. But yeah, every year that I'm there, just like everywhere else, you figure, well, I have more seniority, I should get a little more money than, you know, than I did the year before. So there's that. But we may also make the steps themselves more valuable. So I'm getting an increase, not just because I moved up, but also because that step is more valuable. Now, how much more valuable is another question?
So they're getting, they're getting two bumps?
Uh, yeah. But like I said, the aggregate cost to us is what we look at. We would like to see a more even, you know, chart, you know, compete. We'd like to be more competitive, at least theoretically, but.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that. I'm just trying to understand what everybody, some people's questions are, that 4.25, what's making that drive it up? And that's the, what I call a COLA. You may not call it a COLA.
Yeah.
Everybody's getting an increase, and some are getting steps in addition to that.
Yeah. I mean, the contract numbers, the increases in the contract, those are effectively the COLA. The steps are, even if you, even if we had a 0000, people would still be getting more pay as they move through the table.
But it wouldn't be going up 4.25 if there were zeros?
No, because the table's not structured that way. They could be going up whatever that percentage is, and it's not even.
Understood.
And when I've seen the table, it's just, it's not like, you don't move in a complete diagonal. You know, where every year I get 2%, 2%, 2%, 2%, as I move from step to step to step, even though the steps themselves haven't gone up. I mean, every year, you're, that's the thing that this kind of hides. If you had the same group of teachers in the beginning as you had, and that started at the four years, at the beginning of the four-year contract, even if you had zero increases, it's going to be a more expensive group at the end of the four years. it's gonna be a more expensive group at the end of the four years. Because they will all have now gotten four years more seniority. But it's, that's, it's complicated by the fact that senior teachers retire. You may have ten or twenty retirements and we have ten or twenty hirings, usually on the lower end. And so, and we've enjoyed some years like that where we've had large cohorts of teachers retire. And we've been able to hire, replace that cohort with younger teachers. So we get a little bit of a, you know, benefit. But that's why I, whenever I point out, I point out that the thirty-four million dollars that we start with, that's just as of September twenty twenty-five. So that's, that's the ballpark.
One last question.
Yeah.
Can you explain the stipends increase of two percent a year?
Oh, that. So teachers get stipends if they are, for example, a, there's a whole host of positions. They're usually coaches of some sort for, for extracurricular activities. They get a little something for that. They may get an extra thousand bucks or five hundred bucks or two thousand dollars, depending on who's, you know, who's doing it. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor, good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just, just back to how two point four or five could equal four percent. I see it like compound interest, right? You get two dollars a year on ten bucks, next year you have twelve bucks. So you're getting your percentage on that twelve bucks instead of ten bucks. So it'll always, your compound interest might be two percent a year, but it's going to be a higher number than two percent in actual money back from the bank.
Yeah, right.
Is that kind of how it goes? Every step is worth more. So your two point five percent is worth what that step is worth?
It's, it's something.
Built on top of, uh, it's built on top of what the previous step was.
It can be, it can be a little irrational. So for example, again, I mentioned this before, the, the bargaining unit tends to look at these things from, by just adding up the percentages. So they would add up, what's the value to them? Do they like this number or not? They would add up the four and the three, four and a quarters and get a number. So they get sixteen point seven five. The actual effect is seventeen point eight three percent. Because you compound as you move through. But they never think of, they never, they don't think in terms of seventeen point eight three. They go, do we like sixteen seventy-five or don't we? Yea or nay? And that's how they, that's how they decide whether they like it or not. Same thing, I mean, we don't really look at it the same way. I look at the dollars. We look at the dollars. Okay, this is gonna be, what are we gonna be asking you guys for, you know, next year? Well, first year's gonna be like one point four million dollars. Okay, we gotta find that anywhere in our budget. We're gonna be asking you for the money. That's, that's an consideration. But like I said, the last time that I saw zeros was following an extraordinary event. Remember the oh nine, oh, the, the oh nine to twenty-twelve contract was like zero, zero, one and three quarters? Never saw it again. Thank you.
All right. So we've been talking about this for almost over an hour here. So maybe in the future, if these things come forward again, it might be good to show like a chart with the steps in it as well. It's, it's, I think it was more clear when I heard my fellow councilors to discuss cost of living increase because as it's showing here, these salaries are increasing each year by four point two five percent. It is not, some are going to benefits or something else. This is all straight up going to the teacher's salaries. So even though it says, in the first, right here, the step increases are going up two point four or five or two point seven, there is still the difference between the total cost of four point two five and what that is, is what maybe a merit increase, a step increase, a COLA increase, whatever it wants to be called. In rationale, the teachers are receiving an increase somewhere, not every single one, but somewhere in the ballpark of four point two five. Like unless you're at the top. Somewhere in there, some are getting more, some might be getting less. But probably the minimum you're getting is two point four or five and it, because there's other things in there to consider.
Yeah. So.
But the four point two five are all going to teacher salaries, straight up, all to teacher salaries.
That's right.
Thank you. I see no other hands.
So if you wanna look at the, you've probably all seen this. If you have a copy of the contract, it's on page thirty-four. There's a table. Okay. There, there is a, there is a chart. I, I, I thought this, the whole contract was.
It was sent to everybody.
It was an email form. We didn't, we didn't have a contract.
So if you have a chance, take a look at page thirty-four and it shows you the proposed schedule of the steps and the qualifications. And I think I had that right. There, we have fifteen steps now. Uh, well, actually, we're eliminating the first step.
Right.
So there, there are really fourteen steps. If anybody has a copy of the prior contract, you'll also see the same table. And for that, you can, you can play with the numbers to see what people have looked at. I, I've tried to look through my records to sort of reconstruct, you know, this over the last umpteen years. And I don't know where the darn things have gone. I'm drowning in paper, but I can't find the things that I want. You know how that works.
Point of information?
Okay. Your question.
Um, I just think it would be helpful in the future to have that printed out with the packet, the tables, you know, the whole contract. That's what I was asking at the beginning, to have that, to be able to have it in front of us.
All right. Thank you. Councilor McBride?
Can I, can I make a motion? I appreciate the review and all the information, but.
He's making amended motion.
I'd like to make an amended motion to see if we can postpone this until the next committee of the whole meeting so we can have further review of the actual contract. Because although it seems like everything's in proper place, there does appear to be some questions on the four point two five. So that would be my amended motion.
Point of information? I will second that. But very quickly, I'd like to know, is, are you working on a deadline of any sort?
Well, no, we're not working on a deadline. We've, we've approved the contract. We approved it. It just so happened that we, we approved it after we heard that the bargaining unit had approved it as well. So it's really up to this council. I'm not sure of the date, but there's a thirty-day period by law in which, in which you have to reject it or do nothing. Or if you want to, you can affirmably vote for it. So that's the only clock that's ticking as far as I know.
Point of information? Let me just, there is a motion to postpone. Do you have a date specific?
The next committee of the whole.
And that would be eleven, anybody got a calendar?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Eleven twenty-five? So your amended motion is to postpone till eleven twenty-five?
If it's, yes, if it's possible per the schedule.
Mr. Burr, is there a schedule?
Yeah, it's possible. I just wanted to speak out once I get a chance.
Okay. Councilor Parker, are you saying something? All right. Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe this would be passed the date of when it was signed, when they ratified. So if I'm remembering correctly, and this would automatically go into effect. Because if we reject this, this will go to arbitration. If we make any changes, this is going to arbitration because they've already ratified, the teachers have ratified this contract.
The motion on the floor is to postpone, not make changes. Mr. Burr? I'm sorry, are you finished? I'm sorry. I don't, I don't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
A couple of things. One, the actual thirty days starts once it's submitted to the clerk's office, which I think was, it was either last Friday or Monday. So there is thirty days. However, I just wanted to point out, like, with the salary schedule, this is the same way all collective bargaining agreements are like this. It's not like there's four point two percent, you know, four point two five percent of new cost. You're just getting your steps. You're just adding that COLA to every step. It's very routine. So you're really, it's not a four point two five percent increase. That kind of muddies the water. I mean, it is, but it's not new. So this is very standard stuff, yeah.
I think it might be even just, I'm, I don't mean to jump in, but I think it might also be just the way it's being described and it's hard to rationale. You know, it's just hard to comprehend the rationale of it, so.
You mean, yeah. I, I was thinking, if I, if I knew we were gonna go down this road a lot, if I had time, I suppose I could come up with a take teacher A, right? And walk them through, walk them through the years, what would this teacher experience as you go through the years? And maybe bring up the past that as well, what they were making, that they were making, that they were making, that they were making, so you can see what an individual teacher might be experiencing. We don't look at it that way. Yeah, we look at it from the aggregate. The net effect, the aggregate effect, if you will, is, is a four percent increase in the first year. How that's caught up underneath within the table, it's another matter.
Mr., yeah, I also have a question. Mr. Burr, it says on this here, the settlement summary, it says date October fifteenth, updated November third, updated November sixth. So what is, what is exactly?
The thirty days starts once it's submitted to the clerk, which I believe I received it Monday. I think the clerk received it Monday.
There haven't been changes to the terms. I don't know what, what the, what the updates are. Maybe an update to the document itself, but the terms are what we're negotiating and agreed upon.
Friday, November seventh kicked off the thirty-day review period.
Point of information?
Your question?
What is the goal of having this meeting and what would the outcome be? For postponing it.
Who are you asking?
Directing my question to you for Mr. Councilor McBride.
Councilor McBride, would you like to answer that?
A better explanation of the four point two five increase.
The second question?
Are you finished with your question?
No, he didn't answer the second half of the question. What is the goal? What's the goal of having? Correct. What's the goal to have the postponement? What's the ultimate goal of postponing it besides hearing additional information? Because this will have to be decided upon.
Councilor McBride, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, I, I thought I did answer it. It was just to receive better information on understanding the four point two five percent increase and then possibly comparing that four point two five percent increase to other contracts in the town.
Councilor Boarder, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I don't wanna speak for everybody else, but it would seem to me, as I stated, if we had those documents that we are able to view in the packet, is there any way they can be projected? Would that help tonight if we could get them up on the screen and maybe answer the questions that people are worried about? Because I know, I mean, I can pull stuff up on my laptop, but I know everybody else has their paper, which doesn't have the, that chart that you referenced. So could the town manager pull it up? Would that help to move things along? I, I don't know. Just making a thought.
I can't answer for all the councilors, so I'm not sure.
I'm just asking the town manager.
I mean, he could probably pull it up. I don't know if that will help all the councilors.
Could we just put it up in the meantime so we can see it, if nothing else?
Give me one moment.
Sure.
Okay.
Councilor Jones?
I just had a point of, this contract runs for four years, correct? It just goes till twenty thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we won't, it'll be two councils from now that'll have this discussion again. Is that right?
Yeah, it'll be, yeah. This, this will come up again in twenty thirty. So whoever's here for that.
Okay. That was just, I just went and I went and did.
Councilor Good?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just from, from my perspective, I've spent twenty-five years dealing with payroll in manufacturing and I see no issue with how the numbers come. I'm not sure really what the question is, but I'm, I'm all for voting on it tonight. Thank you.
Councilor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Though I see it, we had the bargaining unit and their lawyers ratify it. Management and their lawyers are happy with it. I don't see the problem. If we need to have more of an understanding, we can just go home and read our email. It's not gonna change anything. If you folks are happy with the, with, with the contract that you both decided on and ratified, far be it for me to tell you, you're wrong. I'm all for voting on it tonight.
All right, I'm just gonna speak up. I had the email. I looked through my stuff. We're trying to, in my head, say, you're gonna spend four point two five percent more, but people are gonna receive an increase of four point, I mean, two point four or five or even a two point six. But you're, it's gonna cost four point two five. Does not rationale in my head. I can't rational, rationalize that, that concept in my head. I do not think that there's a problem waiting until the twenty-fifth. It's still within thirty days. It's probably going to get passed, but it's giving other councilors a moment to go back in and just review this. Because on one hand, they're saying that the increases are these, but the cost and the teachers are actually going to get the four point two five, but it's just not. I don't, I can't rationalize this. It doesn't make sense in a numbers, if you, if anybody who does numbers, it doesn't make sense to me. And maybe it's the steps that are throwing me off.
I can't make it bigger from this because I don't have it loaded on there, so I'm not able to make that bigger.
Microphone?
Grab it.
When you see that, let me actually pull up that sheet of the cost, the cost sheets. When you see the proposed, like, year one, the one point three, three million, that's, you know, the projected teacher salary increase, but that's kind of everything. You're, you're already accumulating for step to step. Yeah, shoot. There it went. No, it worked. Fifty-three thousand to fifty-five thousand. You're just putting the COLA on top of it. You're only adding the percent, that lower percent cost. But if you count up the percent change from step two to step three, fifty-five, fifty-three, eight fifty-two to fifty-five, seven thirty, and then add an extra adjusting those by COLA on top of that, you're getting steps and that. And that's what gets the four point two five. You're not actually getting all new money. There would have been that, whatever these steps added up to, that was already, would have been shown on here. And then it's only gonna up by the two point whatever percent. Every one of our contracts is like this. And it's, it's, it's not all new money. It's not four point two five percent of all new money.
Maybe it's just the way it's written on the settlement summary.
Yeah.
That I, we have not seen usually typically here. It's not usually spelled out that way.
Are we able to ask one question?
Yeah. Well, we are on a postponement, so the question is, should we allow postponement? It should be about postponement.
Should be about postponement. But it's about this.
Are you gonna take your turn or not?
Well, I'll try and you can, you can, if it doesn't work. So my question is, and Councilor, I'm trying to understand how this works. Does the town do this the same way?
Yes. For all collective bargaining.
For all collective bargaining. So I know, you know, we did the budget last year. We had increases that were two and a half. Was there a COLA underneath all of those contracts too?
Yeah. So, let's just look at the twenty-six, twenty-seven salary. Let's just pretend that's today. If you did absolutely nothing from there, you go, you get one more year of experience there on the dot. You go from that fifty-three, eight fifty-two to fifty-five, seven thirty. That's wherever that percentage is. Then they're adding the two point, let me put it out here. But instead of then it was on that first step, it was the fifty-three, fifty-two. But with that COLA, it's only going up to the fifty-five, one seventy-one. So it's just, what, fifty-seven, ninety-five?
What is, what is the COLA? How much money is that?
It's the two point whatever percent. You're already, the rest is built into the natural steps. You'd have that cost regardless. Obviously, when you add COLA, it does affect it, but. Obviously, when you add cola, it does affect it, but...
To figure out the cola, do I take 4.25 and subtract 2.5 from it?
Essentially, yeah. And obviously, it's different. Each one varies from each step.
Different people have different colas?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Well, each step's a little different, you know, not always uniform, but yeah.
So, I guess, I think where Counsel McBride is going with this, I think we did 3% last year on our budget. And this is four. So that's what I'm wondering, is this, does this affect? Let me see, Director Green looking at me back there too. Does this affect our negotiating as we move forward? Are they getting more than what we have been doing with our?
No, they're adjusting the, they're adjusting the steps by less than 3%. We adjusted steps, our last one, I believe, was, we did some initial base increases, but then we did 3% per step. No, this is pretty standard.
Okay, so in terms of helping, Counsel McBride's question is just to have a chart that just sort of highlights this, like, this much is step increase, this much is cola, just stack them up so we see what the different numbers are and how you get to the four, just so we kind of understand. You could, I mean, there's so many, you're not going to do all of them, but you could just do a sampling of them to say, here's one at the bottom, here's one in the middle, and here's one at the high. And this person's salary is made up of this, this, and this. And the middle is this, just split it amongst their increase, their cola, to get to the 4%. Just so we understand it. I'm not disagreeing with this and, you know, I'm in favor of the contract. I think it's just understanding how employment contracts work a little bit more. Just to see where, we keep seeing the four numbers and then we see the two numbers. We don't, really can't correlate them together. So if you can graph it out in some way better, just to show us how it's done.
I'd like to make a motion.
We have a postponement on the floor.
I can make a motion to move the question.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I make a motion, move the question.
Second.
I think, our rules say that I think on a, to move the question, everybody has to have spoken twice.
Madam Mayor, because you guys aren't directing the question to the postponement.
Well, then you could call him out of order.
So, but you allowed him to?
No, it was directed to the postponement.
No, it wasn't. You asked him the question about the numbers. So, again, it's a motion, I put a motion on the floor. And it was seconded.
I believe our rules say we cannot move the question unless everybody has spoken twice. And everybody has not spoken twice on this topic. Counsel McBride, you had your hand up?
I don't agree.
Are you challenging the ruling of the chair?
I am.
Do I have a second? Genius? You do need a second.
Second.
All right, so challenged the ruling of the chair by Parker?
With all due respect, Madam Mayor, I'll just go ahead and second it that. Originally.
Oh, you had, you had seconded the ruling of the chair?
No, no, he had seconded the moving of the question.
You can't do it.
You can't do it.
Oh, I thought that's what you were talking about.
No, she's challenging my ruling on that.
Oh, the ruling is being seconded now. I apologize.
All right, the challenge, ruling of the chair regarding moving the question, motion by Parker, seconded by Good. All right, let's see. It is debatable.
So you get two more rounds? Oh, point of clarification?
Yeah.
So you get two more rounds?
That's correct.
All right, here we go.
Counsel Parker, did you want to speak on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. We're only supposed to discuss the postponement. Are we moving it? Or we don't need to ask additional questions about what the rates are or how to, what the compound is or the interest or what the percentage is? We're only to discuss what the postponement is. That's it. Nothing more, nothing less. So we're asking additional questions about the topic we just talked about under the original motion. So I don't understand why we're still discussing that as a part of the postponement. Because he just asked for a postponement to discuss it later. That's my rationale. Thank you.
Counsel Bordelon?
Again, I'm fine with the numbers that are up here. I think we should just vote on this number, I think. Anyway, but we're talking about ruling of the chair. At any point, anybody could call the point of order. I know I get them thrown left and right at things sometimes I'm not even doing. So if you think that a counselor's not speaking to the motion on the floor, throw your point of order out. That stops the discussion. Yeah? So if you, if you found that a counselor wasn't speaking to the postponement guidelines of the rules, throw it a point of order. Mayor will recognize you and, you know, rule in your favor or not in your favor, and it would stop that discussion from happening. So I just, anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it was pertinent to the postponement because the reason of postponement is to get a better understanding of this, not to stop it or do anything to it, but just to get a better understanding.
Point of order.
Your point of order?
Counselor is answering a question not to do with the ruling of the chair, but his argument for his questioning previously.
What is your point of order exactly?
Question on the floor is the rules on moving the question, not the rules on whatever questions he may have had before. So is, moving the question is on the table right now. That's what we should be speaking to.
I do agree that the ruling, challenging the ruling of the chair to move the question should be about also the rules, but there was rationale brought into as to why this is being brought on. So, Counsel Jones, can you just tighten it up? In more relation to the rules? Or the challenging the ruling of the chair to move the question?
I've probably said enough.
I'm going to, Mr. Burr, is it possible for you? I mean, I have the rules here. I know you can search them much more quickly than I could probably read through them all. Is there a possibility you can find the point in our rules of the 34th Town Council to see moving the question?
Give me one moment.
Can we take a five-minute recess while we do that? So we don't have to take it later? Might as well do it now while you're searching.
We can.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
What time is that? I can't even see the clock.
Eight oh eight.
It's eight oh eight. We're going to take a 10-minute break. All right, we're back from recess. I can't see the time. What is it, eight twenty-five?
Eight twenty-five.
Thank you. All right, so what's on the floor right now is challenging the ruling of the chair regarding moving the question. Mr. Burr, before we went to break, I had asked you if you could quickly look up the ruling where I had said to move the question, everybody needs to have spoken twice.
Sure, it's under D six. A motion may be made and seconded after two rounds of speaking to call the question and end debate by simple majority.
So the rule says that everybody should speak twice. And that's what I had stated. That's why I did not take the moving the question because it was out of, outside the rules of this council. All right, seeing no other hands, we're going to vote on the challenge, the ruling of the chair to move the question. All those in favor of overturning the ruling of the mayor, say aye. Opposed? Aye.
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 Abstentions?
Aye.
So that fails zero to one, I mean, zero to seven to one. The abstention was Parker. All right, so on the floor, we have an amendment to postpone till November 25th. Counsel McBride, I think you are going to speak next on that one.
I think I've spoken enough on this matter.
All right, I'm going to take a moment and say that my rationale for potentially wanting the postponement was to understand more about how they calculated the cost and in relation to the percentage that they're speaking about because I just can't rationalize it in my head, how this is working. So I think if it came back to us in two weeks after further maybe reading about it and questioning it, that I don't think there would be any harm done because it's within the 30-day window. But that is up to the will of this council. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands. So we're going to take a vote on to postpone till November 25th. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? All right, so the postponement fails three to five to zero. In favor were Jones, Franco, and McBride. And opposed were Parker, Good, Pacino, Bordelon, and Merritt. So the postponement fails three to five to zero. The motion back on the floor is the main motion that was to approve the agreement as presented. Anybody else like to speak on this matter? All right, so we're going to take a vote on the main motion for 2025-1005, the Board of Ed GEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
McBride.
Abstentions?
Merritt.
All right, so I'm going to say it passes four to two to one with Franco and McBride.
Point of clarification?
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, five to two to one. Sorry about that. Good catch. Franco and McBride opposed and Merritt abstaining. So that passes. Thank you for your time. I know it took us quite a bit of time to get through this one. So thank you for coming, I appreciate that.
I'm used to it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, up next in our packet is 2025-1040, update on the non-union terms and conditions. This is on page 14 of our packet. Counsel Good, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Item 2025-1040, update to the non-union terms and conditions. I move to recommend the resolution to approve the updated terms and conditions of employment for non-union employees of the Town of Groton.
Second. Moved by Good, seconded by Parker. Good evening. You want to introduce yourselves and give us a synopsis on what's going on here?
Yes, good evening. I am Arneisha Green, Director of HR and Risk Management for the Town of Groton. And before you, you have updates to the non-union terms and conditions. As a reminder, about 50 or so of our workforce are not bargained employees. So this is the document that governs their benefits. And it was last effective '06, approved in '07. So it's more than overdue for some refreshing. And a couple of the items that are mentioned in here for the importance of this is particularly for new hires coming on so that they understand their benefits and it's part of the negotiation process when somebody is being hired, but also being sure that we're bringing it up to current day standards. This document hasn't been touched in a very long time and it's overdue. There are a couple of things that stood out from a cost perspective that were listed in here. One of them was adding vision on, and that's estimated at $3,000. And the other one was adding an additional day of annual leave for a 10-year anniversary. And there's also a chart in there for some of the high-level changes beyond the red line document because there is a lot of red in there and a lot of crossouts. So I can review the chart that was in there. I will say, I'm certainly open to questions, but as a reminder to everyone, we're in negotiations with four of our unions. So there may be questions on benefits and about what others get or thought process, but I have to be very judicial in answering those. And I would just remind everybody to keep that in mind when we're having the conversation.
And Mayor, can I just interject? I just want to point out, per charter, this is something sort of similar to the Board of Education where this falls under my purview. So I have to agree also to any changes to be passed.
And a quick review in the change summary document. Some of the changes include a lot of definitions and adding the proper laws that we're going to adhere to, which we do anyway, but it's good to have it in writing for this employee group. Limited remote work flexibility and scheduling, commentary on the average hiring range, adjustment to merit should it so be awarded, opportunity for directors to have different ways to incentivize folks for working outside of their classification, an adjustment to the holidays that have been passed already by council and also to the three religious holidays that were listed in the document already. It's more general for other religions. An adjustment to the employee co-pay for medical and adjustment to tuition reimbursement in an effort to put some guardrails around that. HSA payments being split in the future, so not next July, but the July after, 7/1/27. Aligning eligibility for some of the benefits in conjunction with the non-union probation, which for new hires, one year. And also defining notice period because it's not in there, so putting some standards to that as well. Those are some of the high takeaways. There's a lot of detail in this document, so I'm open for questions or clarifications for everyone.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Green. So this is a, this is basically a set of, I guess, terms and conditions or rules for the non-union employees. And it hasn't been changed for almost 20 years, is what's going on. Is, does this bring us, does it bring the non-union employees now in comparative, to the benefits that the union employees get?
So there is not always a like-for-like, even among union groups. Never mind non-union and union. It just depends on the combination that you have for each group. So not everything's going to be identical, even among the unions. I will say that this is a competitive document, I would say, and we're made some fine-tune adjustments where we're happy as a town that this represents how we'd like to interact with our team members.
Can I just add on? The director mentioned differences between different collective bargaining agreements themselves. And just as we just saw with steps in the Board of Ed Collective Bargain Agreement, as well as all of ours, you don't have that in the non-union. You only have colas, so it's a less percent each year. So there's some major differences from one thing to another.
They don't get a, they don't get a step increase based on terms.
Right, just the cola.
Just the cola.
Yeah.
So was this, the change that you did to this document, were they more driven by just cleaning up an old document as opposed to bringing parity to some degree?
I think one item was making sure that we had what was actually happening in real time. For example, there's a portion in there that says you can cash out time. That hasn't existed or happened before I came. So some of it is making sure that we are having accurate information for our team members. Some of it is making sure that we're in the present day times. For example, the three- For example, the three holidays that were listed in there as being able to sub out were only for one specific religion versus holidays in general for multiple religions. So some things are an effort to bring us to current times and current ways of thinking from an equity perspective. Some are for updates, and some is making sure that we have reasonable benefits in place, but still recognizing that we want to be competitive. So I think there were different factors to it, and it was time as things just needed updating, yeah.
I don't disagree that it was time. I'm just trying to, for the viewer just watching it and myself, just sort of understanding. So were there employees that, the union employee might get a holiday and a non-union employee might not get a holiday? And this has been, I'm just using it as an example.
Were there what?
Were there, we had union employees whose contracts are updated much more frequently might have had a holiday put in there that a non-union employee might not have been able to access because their agreement didn't say, or these rules didn't say that.
So I would say no one lost out, if that's your question. Let's say, for example, when we added Juneteenth in, although this document wasn't physically updated because the council made an overall passing of it, it was able to be applied to the non-union folks.
Okay, so we weren't, we didn't have people that sort of were sitting there grumbling that they weren't getting what the other people?
Correct, yeah.
And how many employees does this apply to?
It's about 50 in the group.
Okay, I think that's my, thank you.
Thank you.
No, this is much needed and I, there's a lot of changes, so it's nice to see it that we have a much more modern agreement that we, what are we, it's not really an agreement, it's just a set of rules.
It is guidelines, terms, and conditions that we can all look to, so we're making sure we're reading the same thing and folks are fully aware of what's going on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Pacina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And through the mayor, let's go with the funeral leave. I noticed you had, there were five days for spouse, father, mother, son, stepdaughter.
Which page?
Daughter. This is on page 10 of pack, 27 of our packet. 27 of our packet. And then employees may take up to three days' leave to attend a funeral, a family member, of a family member, a close personal friend. Where would in-laws fall in on that? The five or the three days?
Which section is that? What's the number?
It's page 10 of your packet.
New section 12.
On the bottom. The new section 12, yeah, funeral leave.
So any in-laws would be, that are not listed in the first one, would be in the second one.
Definitely be in the second one, okay. All right, and my other question would be, could we put that in there? So there's no questions?
What are you referencing when you say in-laws specifically?
My mother-in-law just recently passed away. Would I get five days off to attend the funeral with my wife, or would I get three days off and send her ahead?
So for this, yes, you would get the three, but I was asking, what were you asking to be considered, so?
I was considering, you know, in-laws is not spoken here. My consideration was to add it to wherever you think it needs to be.
That means mom, dad, brother, sister, that's what I'm asking?
That means mother-in-law, stepmother, you know, or not step, you got steps.
So mother-in-law?
Mother-in-law.
Father-in-law?
My mother's, my wife's mother and father, or my mother and father to my wife. In-laws are not in here at all.
Yes, I'm asking you which one. So do you also mean like brother-in-law, sister-in-law, like, I don't know?
I wouldn't go that far. I wouldn't go too far.
So parents is what you're saying?
Yeah, parents.
Got it.
I apologize, I didn't understand what you were asking me.
No problem.
My next question is on the military leave. Is that for, obviously it's for the reservists if they have to go on active duty, I would imagine. Is that, is that correct?
We follow you, Sarah, in the orders that are received.
And, okay, gotcha. All right. And my last question, I actually asked you when we were at recess, and I'll ask again just for, so everybody can know the question. Was there input from the non-union employees?
The town manager and I did work on a draft, and we did have a session with the non-union folks to share that draft in detail, go over any questions they had, and also solicit feedback.
And some work with the directors before that, too.
True.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. It's a, this is basically a new and improved employee handbook, and I like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilor McBride.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I spoke with town manager Burt, our correspondent today, so most of my questions are answered, but just a couple. 8.6, town manager Burt, were you okay with adding the approval of the town manager there? That's the section where it talks about the carryover for leaves.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea.
So 8.6 currently just has the department head approve it. I was suggesting to have the town manager approve that as well. And then one other question through the mayor, town manager Burt, we discussed tuition increases, and you mentioned maybe something only as funds are available. Should that be incorporated here, or are you just saying that's how you're going to?
Which section is that again?
It's towards the end. Page 34, section 22.
What was the question?
You had mentioned maybe I was concerned about the total cost of tuition reimbursements because there's no actual dollar amount, and you indicated.
We're adding in a dollar amount here. Well, we're more concerned about the total.
What section? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, it's the new section 20, which would be page 34 of your agenda packet or page 17.
Oh, 20.
Tuition reimbursement. So right now, there is no set limit on the amount overall for the total, so we're looking to set it for a minimum of $20,000, but also leading the caveat, though, that of course the council would have to, you know, council could do as they wish with the budget, so, but that's kind of the goal amount is $20,000 for a cap.
So that in effect becomes only as funds are available because it's only budgeted funds?
Council always retains the right to set budget.
Excellent. I think I had asked about page 33.
Oh, and there's a maximum per, sorry, can I just add on that? And just point out for anybody else, the, so the actual reimbursement rate, though, is a max of 50% of the average cost of State of Connecticut college or university per credit cost. So there are at least, you know, some caveats on the amount per credit hour.
Okay.
And we go with IRS top for reimbursement. What was that currently for the IRS reimbursement?
It's 5250, I believe. It hasn't changed in a couple of years.
So 5250 is the max in a year?
For each employee, okay.
Again, the limited pot of money, too.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Page 33, the effective date, oh, I see. Does that need, I guess I'll have to disregard, I'm all set with that. The last question I have is really a comment. I found that opt-outs are financially very beneficial for healthcare in, throughout all areas, and I'm just wondering if you could do a review of that in the future because where there's not opt-outs, I've seen that there's a tremendous amount of people who have dual coverage, and if we can offer opt-outs, it can be a significant savings for the, for the town. So if it's something you could look at in the future, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I have directed, we've already discussed about, yeah, looking at for the future. So we.
Just as an informational only because we're in negotiations with contracts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Thanks. Councilor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Burt or Ms. Green, my question is, is only State of Connecticut colleges or any university? What if they do it online?
That's what the reimbursement is based on. It's not saying you can't attend one, but let me turn to that just to be sure how it's written.
Right. It's just saying that 50% of?
20. 50% of the average cost of a State of Connecticut college or university per credit cost, and they do vary between the schools, so that's why it would be an average. And that's the base to figure the 50% on. It doesn't mean you can't go to a private or different university.
Or outside, if you go to Rhode Island or whatever else.
Would it be a problem to add that in and say it has to equal to the State of Connecticut colleges?
It does say reimbursement will be at the rate of 50% of the average cost of a State of Connecticut college?
Yes, but if someone attends a different college online, I'm going to use Purdue as an example, they're not based here in Connecticut. They're based out of Florida and out west. So if a person does it online because they can't attend in person, you just basically locked in saying it's a State of Connecticut or university.
That's correct from a cost-saving measure, because if we were just to tie it to a school, let's say they went to Yale online and it's a percentage of that, that's not, that would be too much of a range, so this is an attempt to have one finite cost that everybody's aware of and from a cost-saving measure what that cost is.
But you can do the Purdue online. It's just setting a max cost.
But could you say it could be equal to, it has to be a State of Connecticut, not State of Connecticut school because you locked, I'm saying you're locking yourself in, so if somebody doesn't want to go to a State of Connecticut college, they go to somewhere else, you just only announce that it's these two type of universities because you have Yale University, you're right. But if they do something different, just say that it's equal to, it has to be the equal to cost, average cost of a.
So just clarify it and make sure people understand that they could.
I mean, it does say reimbursement is at the rate of X. That's pretty clear, I think. Yeah, at the first sentence, it says reimbursement will be at the rate of, and maybe we could put colons there.
Or it does not preclude online or other, you know, colleges outside of Connecticut.
Yeah, because this is not saying where you can go, it's saying the monetary calculation.
But I don't see a reason we couldn't clarify.
So clarify.
It's a good idea.
Thank you.
Councilor Bordalan.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I thought that that line was pretty clear, or when I read it, I thought it was clear that it was, you know, the percent of the Connecticut schools, so, but if you want to have more language to Councilor Parker's point, that's fine, but I, I don't, I think it's pretty straight, it says it pretty much there. Like, it doesn't say that it's excluding any other schools and saying up to, so, so I don't see a prob, I don't, I got it. So I just wanted to go back to Councilor McBride's question about the opting out, so currently right now, employees can't opt out of the medical coverage?
The great majority of employees in the town cannot. There's a very limited application in one contract.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, whatever is decided will be decided outside of here today, but I just want to speak from my own experience, like, where I work, I am able to opt out of it. My husband's insurance is the better insurance. If I did not have that option and I had to take the insurance through my employer, based on my birthdate or however the algorithm fell, I would be paying so much out of pocket. And the other insurance would have covered it, but the thing would happen is, my, the, so say I was working for the Town of Groton, I would have, I could possibly have to lose my current doctors because you guys might not be in network with them. So that not giving me a chance to make which one my primary and opt out could have a lasting effect for someone who has a major critical condition that's, you know, already being seen, you know? Like, I've been seeing these doctors and specialists for seven years since I've had cancer. So having that significant change for someone like me would be devastating. Not, so I can agree with Councilor McBride that it's under certain circumstances, it's important to have that ability to opt out because it's not just the cost, it can have a lasting effect medically because what's considered tier on this, even medications, like inject, when I looked at mine, like, what I was ending up owing and like, based on my injections and my scans and everything I have to still get, my medications I'm on, like, it was going to be astronomical. So I just want to bring in another side besides just the cost savings to the town, the benefit to the employee to not have to worry about that metric system of which one becomes primary and which one becomes secondary.
Understood, and for your example, employees can opt out, they're not required to take our insurance, just to clarify.
Oh, okay.
Which I think may be different than a financial aspect to, like, an incentive to opt out might be what I understood, I think.
Okay, that's my.
Versus like, just to clarify for you, that's a good question.
Okay.
You do not have to take our insurance. There is something here where you're going to have to show other insurance, yes, but you're not tied into ours.
So when you say a financial, I guess maybe that's my question, maybe I misunderstood, Councilor McBride, I apologize. What, through the mayor, what was the, what were your thoughts on that? I guess I just wanted to understand.
Councilor McBride, would you like to answer?
Can I, I can answer that?
You, if you would like to.
Yeah, so as an example, it's just hypothetically, I have family health care costs the town $40,000 for health care. If my wife or significant other spouse has insurance, I can have opt-out and then they'll give me, I'm just going to make a number, $3,000 maybe. They'll pay me $3,000 versus me going through and continuing to have the coverage, because if there's no incentive to opt-out, I'm going to continue to get coverage, I'm going to have dual coverage. So you incentivize by paying them a couple thousand as opposed to spending the $40,000. Because most people will just do the dual coverage.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Yeah, I can also agree with that, is, you know, that they say it is a benefit to the town and, because like, you know, again, for me opting out of my plan, I'm saving my employer like hundreds of thousands of dollars a year by not putting the weight of my medical on their policy. So, yeah, and, you know, what incentive, right? Like, if you're already paying a certain amount per employee, there could be an incentive to have some type of other incentive to employees that opt out of it. Some of the things I've seen, and I don't know, in different states, they've done things where like they maybe, like I said, I, again, I don't know if it's legal here or not, but I saw some things where one of my friends in California said that they were able to get like a couple thousand dollars on a, what's the medical account called?
HSA.
Yes, account could go on there and they could use it for the gym or other, you know, incentives to, you know, that fell within that parameter that was agreed upon, so. Many different thoughts, thank you.
Mr. Burt, did you want to?
I was just going to say, it's definitely something we'll study, but you also have to keep in mind that there's also, you're penalized for taking both if you don't need it because you are paying the cost share. And we actually have a significant portion of non-union who opt out already. So you'd have, we'd have to really study that, are we going to get any more opting out by doing a bonus? And then there's also an argument from others, like, why should one person get it and another person does it? So it's more involved, you know, it's something we want to spend some time on, so. But it is very common, just.
Councilor Pacina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to tag on the same thing, being a retired, from the military, I don't need health insurance. I get, I get it almost free for the rest of my life, and I don't like the idea of having to pay for something that I don't need, but we'll move on from that, we'd beat that horse to death. So my other question was, where was my other question? Oh, the tuition reimbursement. Again, being retired military, the State of Connecticut gives me free tuition. With that said, would this 50% get reduced if I'm already getting free tuition, or would that be something I could use toward books?
It should be for costs that you actually incurred. And the way we have it, I believe, is just for tuition.
Let's say you already had 75% covered, well, you could cover the other 25% with this, where you're not going to get beyond what that total actual cost is. You're not getting, you're not getting money back on top.
So my, my best bet is to talk to the school and say, just give me 50% and give me the other 50% in books, because I get 50% coming from the, coming from my.
No comment.
Okay, got you. All right. I think I'm good with this. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any more hands. We're going to take a vote on 2025-1040, Update to the Non-Union Terms and Conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes seven to zero to one, and an abstention by Merritt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Up next is 2025-521-9, Pleasant Valley Final Project Concept/Development Team Draft, Purchase, and Sales Agreement. One second. This is on our packet on page sixty-one. Motion to go into executive session is here. I think we're gonna read the motion.
You can leave Corinne Piazza off, she's not able to attend tonight.
Okay. We're gonna read the motion, and then we'll have a synopsis before we go in, if it's possible at all. And then we'll go take a vote. All right. Council McBride, if you want to take that on page sixty-one slash sixty-two.
Certainly, thank you. I'd like to make a motion. I move that the members of the Town Council, Director of Planning and Development Services John Reiner, Town Manager John Burt, Economic and Community Development Manager, excuse me, I'm gonna remove that, and Town Attorney Eric Callahan go into executive session pursuant to General Statutes one dash two hundred, print six, and print, print D, and print, for the discussion of the selection of a site for the lease, sale or purchase of real estate by the state for a political subdivision of the state concerning the draft terms of the purchase and sales agreement for the former Pleasant Valley school property.
Second.
Who buy my price, they're gonna buy good. Okay, would you like to introduce yourselves and give us a little synopsis?
Sure. Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services.
Good evening, Attorney Eric Callahan from Sussman Shapiro.
And very briefly, many of the last meetings, we've gone over the process of requests for proposals, the process for the PSRC, why the council is going through this process, the authority to go into executive session. And we've given those overviews quite a few times tonight. I'll just briefly state, the last time we were before the council, we did a brief overview in public session. We then went into executive session and talked about the terms of the agreement. We came to a consensus of the council on what those terms should be for the sale. And council directed staff to put together a purchase and sales agreement, working with the town attorney, as well as with the developer and their representatives. We supplied and drafted that purchase and sales agreement to the council, and that's what we're gonna talk about tonight in executive session.
Thank you. All right. Let's take a vote on going to executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. We're going to executive session, I believe it's eight fifty-nine. Okay, we're back from executive session at nine forty-seven PM. Maybe we should take, put a motion on the floor first. This is on our packet on page sixty-two. Council Jones, do you hear, I think you're packed up. You wanna take that?
Twenty twenty-five dash five twenty-one, Pleasant Valley Final Project Concept slash Development Team Draft Purchase and Sale Agreement.
Yep.
Motion to recommend approval of the purchase and sale agreement and to authorize the town manager to sign and execute the final document with Spinnaker Real Estate Partners. So move.
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Good. Mr. Reiner, would you like to give us any kind of information you can at this time?
Sure, so a brief summary of what is in the purchase and sales agreement. So the project we're talking about, working with Spinnaker, is an approximately three-hundred-unit multifamily development project. Spinnaker will be doing all the environmental remediation of the site, demolishing the school at their expense. There is no tax abatement proposed for the property. The sale price of the property will be a pro, will be eight hundred thousand dollars. The town will get a ten thousand dollar deposit, and then once the project, at the time of closing, they'll get the remaining balance on that. As part of this project, there'll be, at a minimum, a half-acre park that will be a deed-restricted playground on the property. And at build-out, the town expects over a million dollars in new tax revenue for this property.
All right, thank you. Council Bordelon.
Oh, thank you. I guess for me, I appreciate the amenities that are being mentioned, the park and many other things. At one point, there was an agreement or thought process to try to have an affordability or a certain percent, which is no longer in this, because it just didn't have the affordability aspect from the ratio of what we would actually be doing. Unfortunately for me, it's nothing against the developer, but as sole counselor, it's be for myself. Overwhelmingly, people are asking for affordable housing. And I understand that this could be done on this particular situation with this development. So I might abstain tonight, because I feel overwhelmingly, like, when I speak to my friends that are military, my son's friends, they can't afford Triton. They can't, they're probably not gonna be able to afford this. So it's great to have more housing on. And as it was stated, that, you know, Triton Square doesn't have overwhelming number of families in it with children. So this is not family housing, and there's a huge shortage for family housing. And there's a huge shortage for, that affordability for non-families and single codes. So I guess, you know, I'm hoping in the future that we look at things that are, looking at that. I, I looked at Ledgerd. Ledgerd just did an agreement with some land there for Habitat for Humanity. And, you know, that's, that's more of the style and things that people are looking for. So at this time, we just built the other mega-development on that same side of town. It's getting kind of heavy over there. I, I may abstain, and it's not for not liking the projects, but to stand in solidarity with the people who really want affordable housing. And fortunately, we weren't able to do it with this one. But, you know, something has to be done. Thank you.
Attorney Callahan, would it be appropriate to get into any discussions regarding the affordability component of this at this time? And what the council discussed in executive session?
I think it's, it's fine to explain that, from a dollars and cents standpoint, you know, whether or not it was an acceptable thing to have in this agreement or not.
Okay.
Though I would add on, some of the thought process is maybe some of the a hundred-dollar purchase price could be put towards affordable housing issues.
Yes, that's what I was gonna take my time and actually speak with, if I got the go-ahead, without compromising any of this. My perspective is, the amount of money that the tax abatements that they would be requesting would be so large, that would accommodate possibly thirty units over a period of time. And I, can you tell me again what that year period was, Mr. Reiner?
It was at a minimum of seven years. Depending on if they could have gotten some alternative financing, it could have been a longer period of time. But it was at least a seven-year period of affordability.
Okay. And the amount of tax abatement that they would have received would have been enormous, in my perspective. And speaking for myself, I think that money would be better used by receiving instead full tax benefit to the town. And we can use part of the money that we receive annually from the tax revenue received to help people in our community. People with rent assistance, or if they need fuel assistance, or any other type of thing. And part of that tax money that we receive could be used that way, to help vast amounts of people, instead of thirty units over a course of maybe seven years. It just, it was, when you did the math, it did not add up. And I think this is a better route that would help vast amounts of people in our community in a better way. So that's where I stand on it. Of course, we'd all like affordable housing. We want to do that. It was, I'm gonna speak for myself. I know it was a goal of this council, but in reality, when you crunch the numbers and the amount that it would cost the town as a whole, it didn't add up. It just didn't. It was, and it's sad. It's very sad, because the government is not giving subsidies to help with these anymore. This is the, the place we are in at this moment. It's very sad. But when you consider over a million dollars in tax revenue every year that will help our community, if you take a good chunk of that, and how it could help our community, I think it would go farther. Council Good.
Just, I'm gonna sing my old song. Affordable housing is more housing. Even Triton Square, according to real estate sites, is at eighty-seven percent capacity now. They're not even, the apartments aren't done. There's still bulldozers on the property. I go up there at least once a week. So without more housing, all the rents go up at whatever the market allows. That makes affordable housing not affordable. Thank you.
Council Bordelon.
Thank you. Again, for me, as I stated, I was hopeful, and again, I agree with, with the mayor stating as far as the numbers, they, with this particular agreement, the numbers did not make sense at all. It was, after seven years, there was no guarantee that affordable housing would stick, and the amount of money on the tax abatement, I can agree. I hope in the future, council, that, as of today, we have not made any, you know, thing as a council in writing, that we're using any of this money to help with affordable housing. But I hope that that's the case, that we will, with some of these profits down the road. So I, I definitely will support that moving forward. But for now, I'll abstain. And, you know, again, I hope that we seek projects in the future that bring in that component that do work, and the numbers that will work, like Ledgerd just did with Habitat for Humanity. Again, I have a different view, and I, of you, I can respect the other councilor's opinion on putting more of that in. We might be just bringing more people into the town, not satisfying the need of the people that are already here. There are studies that say, when you build more housing, other people that weren't already here seeking housing move in. So those numbers get skewed, not the people that are here right now looking for the housing. So that's kind of, it's kind of a vague number, we don't know. So it's great to have, but I look at people, I look at single guys, EB's first classes that can't afford Triton Square and can't afford probably this new place. That is a concern for me. Single guy making, you know, a decent salary, serving their country. Not everybody at EB makes six figures. We have to remember, there's janitors, there's cooks, there's many other people, painters. So the big concept of these mega-million-dollar folks are coming in, EB is a tapestry of moderate to high income. And people there are telling me they cannot afford these. So it's great that we have some people filling up eighty percent of Triton Square. Again, I just, you know, speak for the people right now that today, can't find housing, they can't afford two thousand dollars as a single person. They can't afford two thousand dollars as a dual-income household. So, again, it has nothing to do with the developer, who they are, the concept, what they're gonna build, or their integrity whatsoever. I just want to see us as a council and a town really be put out these things to be bringing in different plans and concepts. It doesn't have to always be mega-development. There are smaller developments where, like Ledgerd, they're doing some single-family homes with some duplexes that are affordable, and the town is helping with the land and all of that. So I seek those ideas. Once you give away land and sell it, you can't get it back. That side of town's already getting heavy. People are concerned about traffic on that side. Now you're gonna have those six hundred or however many units all crammed into that one area of town, from an environmental standpoint as well. Again, I, I'm excited for the park, I'm excited for the trails, but I seek to see where this will go. And the numbers, I agree, did not add up. It was going to be not cost-effective at the time. Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any more hands. We are gonna take a vote on two zero two five dash five two one dash nine, Pleasant Valley Final Project Concept Development Team Draft Purchase and Sale Agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
That passes seven to zero to one, with Bordelon abstaining. Second. I have a motion by Bordelon, seconded by Parker, for German. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero, and it is nine fifty-six PM. Good night, y'all.